All right, our auditor, Mr. Redman, come forward. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Is it possible
Oh.
to do the external audit?
Yes, I'm sorry, you had requested that and I'd forgotten all about it.
Yes, sir, it's listed on the city manager's agenda, but if we could bring it up.
Yeah, we've got, our auditors need to, they've got a long ride ahead of them and they are here, so if there's no objections, we'd like to go ahead and call up the report of our independent auditor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Let me just say, as they come forward, you know, this is the first year that Malden and Jenkins has done the external audit and I don't want to, let me just yield to the finance director and let you make the comments.
All right, there we go. Good evening. So as the city manager mentioned, this year is the first year that we've had a change in external auditors for a very long time. And so what I'd like to just go over briefly is initially how we've gotten here. On April 23rd, 2018, Albright, Fortinberry and Ninis LLP met with the executive management to include the city manager and the mayor at the time, as well as city staff to advise that they would be unable to perform our annual audit due to circumstances beyond their control. On April 25th, 2018, we, myself, contacted the second highest ranked and responsive bidder of our most recent auditing services, RFP, which was Malden and Jenkins. Had a very pleasant conversation here with Mr. Miller Edwards. And on May 8th, 2018, a letter was emailed to, provided, I'm sorry, to city council explaining the preceding events, just explaining that Albright and Fortinberry were unable to perform our audit just due to circumstances beyond their control and what our response to that was. And we also advised in the letter that we would come to council on May 22nd to request approval of executing the contract with Malden and Jenkins, and that was approved by council on May 22nd. So, like I said, we've had Albright, Fortinberry and Ninis for a very long time, and I can say that shortly after the May 22nd meeting, the audit activities commenced and it was different. It was great to have a new set of eyes, take a look at our financial records, and also with that new set of eyes, just came a fresh perspective. So what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Mr. Miller Edwards, he's the partner in charge for Malden and Jenkins out of the Macon office, and he's going to present our audit report as of June 30th of 2018. You should have in front of you a CAFR document as well as this paper presentation, but the other bound copy is the presentation that Miller will be going over.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for having me here. As Angelica said, there are several things in front of you. What I wanted to follow was one that has a pretty picture of the waterfront. I think that's something we put together that's for these very kind of purposes, to help people such as yourselves and others that may not be nerd accountants like I am, to walk through what does this audit really mean and what do the members mean, et cetera. Of course, during the course of this, you're welcome to ask me questions at any time unless you want a different kind of protocol. I'm here to answer questions and share with you insights that I may have.
Hold on just a second, I think the rookie mayor just undid your microphone. Can we get that turned back on? Sorry. Wasn't because we weren't pleased with what you're saying.
Testing, testing. One, two, three. All right, you want me to use this? Is this, am I going to be pushing this forward? Okay. Well, again, what you see right there is what we call the auditor's discussion and analysis. It attempts to summarize the financial results that are included in your conference of annual financial report. When you look at the report, there's a lot of information in it and it's kind of sometimes hard to digest what exactly it is you're looking at, and so that's why we put together this thing we call the auditor's discussion and analysis. So with that being said, I'm going to peruse through it, and you've got the hard copy, I believe, in front of you. First page you see there is just an example of the clients that we serve. We serve 450 governments across the southeast, primarily in Georgia. So you can see places that are similar in size and nature to Columbus, Savannah, Macon, Augusta, those kind of places as well. It's a big part of what we do as a firm. It's the largest niche we have in the firm. It's not always been that way, but it's developed over time. There's a growing demand in this sector of business for accountability and auditing services, and I'm happy to say we've been a big part of what's going on here in the southeast. So happy to be of service to you all this year. Hopefully, we were able to bring some experience to the table to make it into a good transition. The next thing I've got is page numbered one, and what page number one does is try to summarize everything I've already said and a few other things, and that is the purpose of this meeting today is to highlight to you what we have as far as the audit process and the results thereof. What are the different responsibilities by you, by us? What is it that we all are supposed to be doing? What kind of issues did we have? Did we have any kind of problems that we had to go get expert testimony or expert help and consultation doing some things? We didn't have any of that. Did we have any kind of issues when it came to independence? We didn't have any of that. Those kind of things are addressed inside this document. We also talk about the financial statements themselves and some of the good things we see and any concerning things we might see. Additionally, we have some recommendations for improvement that you would expect, I would think, of a new auditor, not to mention just as the annual audit process alone. So again, that's what this document attempts to do, is summarize all of these things as we go through it. You turn to the next page, that's just a little bit more about who we are. We have eight offices. I am out of the Macon office. I live an hour and a half from here. I live on the west side of Macon, so I appreciate you having me up early, but hopefully it won't be too long of a drive home. I might be home before y'all get finished. You never know. So, again, that gives you a little summary of who we are. That's what pages two and three are for. Now we go to page four itself, and page four attempts to summarize the auditor's report, and you've asked me, you've asked Malden and Jenkins to come in here and to audit the Columbus Consolidated Government. The reason for that is not just to meet state law or any other kind of bond covenants, but it's a one-time-a-year, it lasts more than one day, it kind of goes for about six months, but it's an opportunity to have someone come in from the outside with certain expertise to look at what you've got for financial statements, look what you've got for the record-keeping function, and to opine on, are we in good shape and are these financial statements indeed correct? And so that's what the audit process is. So we've been asked to essentially certify what you have here in front of you as far as your conference of annual financial report. I'm happy to say that we are able to give you what you might call a clean opinion, in our industry, we call it an unmodified. We are able to give you a clean opinion on your CAFR, which means basically to you and all other instant parties that we do believe that your financial statements that have been presented to you present fairly in all material respects the financial position and the results of operations for this year that we are being asked to cover. So as of June 30th, 18, what's being presented to you tonight, we believe we can give a thumbs up and say they are accurate and to be followed. We did have an emphasis of matter, that's a new paragraph that's inside this document on page four. The emphasis of matter has to do with a new pronouncement that was implemented this past year. You all probably have heard about other post-employment benefits, otherwise known in this industry as OPEB. There is a standard that you all had to implement this year to put that into your financial statements at a new degree, a new level, and that's been done. The reason we call it an emphasis of matter is it was material, it was a large adoption of a new principle, and we felt like we had to make that in our audit report very clear. Going to the next page, page five. You all do what you've heard me refer to as a CAFR, a conference of annual financial report. State law and general accepted county principles don't require a CAFR. They require basic financial statements, okay? You all have elected to do this additional work, and you've been doing it for many years, long before I got here. You all have an introductory section that talks about a lot of things. Some of them are financial, some of them are non-financial. You also have statistical information, that's the third set of bullets you see. You've got statistical information that gives you 10 years' worth of data. So if you want to see how we looked in 18 and say, you know, how do we compare to 2012? That data is greatly in here. Some of it's non-financial as well, if you want to see information about certain services and what the level of services were on a non-financial sense, some of that is in here as well. It's a great way of providing to a reader something more than just this one snapshot of this one year, but giving you other information to compare to right here within the document. Hats off to you for doing it as long as you have. Pam, how long have y'all been getting a CAFR award? 30 years or so? I mean, so again, y'all have been doing this for a long time, and not a lot of governments have been. It's becoming more and more popular, but you all are one of those kind of governments that pave the way for others to want to do this and to emulate you. So again, hats off to you for that. You've been recognized and awarded a certificate every year that you've done this. I fully expect you to get it again with this year's audit. Going to page six, the overview of the financial statements is where we begin, and your audit is very encompassing. You've got your primary government yourself, but then you think about all the component units you've got, like the hospital authorities included in here, the waterworks is included here. You've got a lot of entities that are related to this consolidated government that are part of the big package of what's in this CAFR. Some of those entities have been audited by other auditors. We have to use their audit accordingly to incorporate it into your audit and audit everything else that remains. So again, it's very much a team effort of approaching this overall audit. When I look at the city itself toward the bottom, the last third of this page, highlights that hit me. You all are a pretty large government. You've got $728 million worth of assets in your primary government. That's looking at your general fund through your proprietary funds, your agency funds, everything. You all have got a large government here, $728 million worth of assets. A lot of that is capital assets, a lot of that is things like the roads, the bridges, the facilities, all those kind of things. But nonetheless, you're talking three-quarters of a billion dollars' worth of assets are being managed in some shape, form or fashion by you, this governing board. So that's a pretty large government. You've got about $386 million worth of overall liabilities. We're talking about things as simple as accounts payable, to revenue bonds, to other kind of debts, to net pension liabilities, things of that kind. You've got a large amount on your balance sheet. You end up having a net worth or an equity of about $342 million. Now, I don't know about you, I'd love to personally have that kind of balance sheet. Can you imagine having $700 million worth of assets with only $386 million in liabilities with a net worth of $342 million? That'd be pretty awesome. It's a good-sized city that you all govern right here. There's a lot of things going on, is the point. You do have an unrestricted deficit. When I look at this and I say you've got a net worth or an equity of this large amount of 342, a lot of that's invested in your capital assets. And so if you dive into the equity section, you've got a lot of things invested in capital assets. When it comes to the free and clear, you've got an unrestricted deficit. You might sit there and say, whoa, 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 why do we have a deficit? You have a deficit there like a lot of governments do nowadays. With the adoption of that pension standard a few years ago and the adoption of that OPEB standard this year, that is about $190 million worth of liabilities that you all have now that you used to not be reporting on your books, okay? Now, by doing that, you still have an overall equity position, but at the components of equity, you've got an unrestricted deficit in there. Nothing to cry about, nothing to worry about. That's the way a lot of governments look. I've got governments your size and bigger that have a lot more unrestricted deficit. I've even got some governments that at this perspective have a total deficit of their liabilities outweigh their assets. I got one school district that has a $1.4 billion liability for their pension plan. It took them under four years ago when they adopted that, and the OPEB plan made it go even deeper. And this is a huge government that we're talking about, one that you would recognize. So again, this is not unusual. Actually, you look better than most governments of your size. Going to the next page, I dive into the statement of activities. That's what we call the income statement at entity-wide level. In a nutshell, at the primary government level, at your fund levels, you took in about $292 million worth of revenues this year, okay? $292. But you also had expenses of about $278 million. So your bottom line was about $13, $14 million. I think it was like 13 and a half million that you had for bottom line. People might say, well, why do we need to have a bottom line of that kind? That's, you know, we're not in the business of making money. No, but what this did is this provides cash flow because from that, you have to be able to pay for debt and other enhancements to the facilities and those kind of things. So at this point, it is important to show a good, strong bottom line because there are certain things that you otherwise might think you're expensing that you're not, that's going to your balance sheet, you've got to have this coverage to do it. So I look at this and I think this is a very good-looking and reasonable statement of activities. That's just a perspective I want to share with you. Turning the page, I've got some graphs, some charts up there, some pie charts. The general fund is now where I'm about to take you and look at the general fund itself. That's the heart and soul of the government. Fair statement. Most times, if we're going to get into budget debates, it's going to be about the general fund. Well, your general fund took in about $187 million this year, so of that previous number of that $292, 187 of that ran through the general fund. Components of that revenue stream, you can see in that chart, property taxes was about 57 and a half million. That represented about 31% of your revenue stream in the general fund. Your sales taxes were at 38% coming in at about $72 million. So just those two alone, you were looking at about 69% of your revenues were coming in the form of property taxes and sales taxes.
Would you give those 2% as a given?
The property taxes were 31% of your overall general fund revenues, and your sales taxes were at 38%, okay? Now, somebody asked me earlier this morning in another city, very similar in size to you all, what's the right mix? This other city I went to this morning, again, they're almost identical size-wise to y'all. They actually, 50% of their revenues were from property taxes, and they asked, is that too high? And I said, well, it really depends. It depends on what kind of activities and commerce you've got going on. The job of a governing board is to find the right balance and the right mix. So there is no one-way or the highway approach, and your approach can even change over time depending on what goes on here. But in your case right now, those two represent 69% of your revenue, it's just those two components alone. Another thing that we've got down below is the expenditures, and we're looking at it the same way. And you see that big slice of pie? That big slice of pie is public safety. It's about $101 million. It represents 59% of your expenditures. So that's a big part of what you have here. Public safety is always the biggest part of a city or county government, so don't be surprised by that slice of pie. It's a big part of what goes on. Is it the right level right now at 59%? That same government I went to this morning, they were at 50%, okay? Right or wrong, there is no right or wrong, but I'm just giving you comparability that you just always ought to kind of be attuned to, is how do you compare to other places? I will tell you, this other government I went to this morning is not near as healthy as you all are, okay? So you've got to weigh a lot of things into this mix. But 59% is a pretty large chunk of where your time and effort is going. I'm sure you see it and feel it in your capacity up here. That's a big part of what local government is about, is providing public safety, fire, police, all those type of things. The next page, we look at your change in fund balance, and you can see it kind of goes all over the place, up, down, and all around. That's the nature of a general fund. It's not unusual to have it go up, down, move it all around. You have to appropriate some of fund balance, but this will give you a snapshot of the last six years of what we've had happen with fund balance at the general fund. This year, it actually increased by 1.4 million, and that was after making some restatements that I'll get to in a few minutes. So your overall fund balance, when you compare it in this CAFR to last year, it increased by 1.4. Only you can decide if that was the right direction. Personally, I think it's important for governments right now to be building up their fund balance. We had a recession that started in 2008. I had a lot of governments that took it on the chin back in that period of time and ate their fund balance down. Some of my governments that didn't have a good fund balance going into the recession really took it on the chin, had to cut services and all kind of things. The trick right now, if I'm in your shoes, is building for that contingency of tomorrow. And I keep hearing people, economic experts, saying recessions come every 12 years. 2008 was 12, 2020. I hope it doesn't happen, but part of what you need to be thinking about right now is the importance of growing that fund balance to be able to continue to provide services in those lean years. So I think adding a layer of fund balance is a good thing. So that's just a personal opinion, not anything more than that, okay? When I do look at your fund balance, I do think that you're in a healthy position. Nothing to write home and brag about, but I do think you're healthy. This other government I went to today had 13 days' worth of fund balance. That means that their funds, they had net, net of all liabilities at the general fund, they had 13 days of wherewithal. You all have 100 days based on that measurement. That's a pretty big difference. I see a difference in health real quickly. I know that for you all, you like to look at unassigned fund balance, which is a fair thing to do because you've got restricted elements of fund balance. Your unassigned is about 33 million, which gives you then about 75 days' worth of cash and investments to fund this. That's pretty good. That's where you probably ought to be at June 30th. Think about it, what you have at June 30th. At June 30th, you've still got to get through July, August, September, October, property taxes start coming in. We need to measure out nicely at June 30th. If you get measured at 9:30 like Cobb County does, you're going to look a lot different. You might look anorexic, okay? You get measured like Gwinnett County does at 12:31, you might look fat as a sow, okay? It's when you measure it, and your measurement's June 30th, and when I look at June 30th, you need about three months' worth of fund balance. You need what you've got here, if not a little bit more for contingency planning. So again, I look at it and I think it's in pretty good shape. I think you're right where you ought to be. Nobody should be upset by having too much or too little. You're kind of right there in a nice little place to be. That's a personal perspective as well. Turning the page, I'm out of the numbers for the moment. I'm going to dive into the rest of the audit. As an auditor, we are required to do a variety of testing, not just look at the numbers, but look at your systems, and look at your internal controls and how well you follow state laws and federal laws and covenants and all those kind of things. And you actually look pretty good. We had two findings this year, but they weren't necessarily related to systems as much as they were to some prior period adjustments we had to make, and I'll dive further into that in a minute. But when I look at your systems, overall, you're in pretty good shape. You don't have a lot of conflicting or segregation of duties issues. We do have some, but not material enough and significant enough, and I need to call that a finding. We also looked at your federal programs. This past year, you took in almost $8 million worth of federal funds through federal programs, you know, like the Workforce Investment Act, things like that, the WEA. Airport, you had all kind of improvement grants done out there. Those two are the two that we actually tested, and we added up to about $3.5 million. So we tested about 50%, like 45% of your federal funds, and I'm happy to say that I'm able to give you an unmodified opinion as to your compliance with the federal funds that you received. I can't say that everywhere. I had another airport improvement grant that I went to in the same place I talked about this morning, and we had a finding relative to that. Being in compliance with federal guidelines is tough to do. If you've ever been in that role, the rules of the game seem to change daily. You know, you get a grant and this is what you think you're supposed to do, and then you find out, no, they want you to do it another way. It's just a constantly changing situation. You all came out unscathed. You did everything right. You met the standards. You dotted all i's and crossed all t's. That's a good place to be. On page 11 is the beginning of several pages that I won't bore you with, but they're there for me to tell you anything that I'm required to. We call it required communications. A required communication would be, if, say for instance, I had a disagreement with management, we couldn't agree on something, I'm required to tell you that we had a disagreement. I'm happy to say we had all agreement. Once we got through the first-year audit process of how you do it and how we think it ought to be done, we always found a happy meeting of understanding and everything is good. We had no independence problems. That's always something we have to report to you. If there was any kind of concern about independence, we need to share that with you because we need to be independent. You've hired us to be independent of management. We have none of those issues. We didn't have any reason to go get expertise. We didn't have to call Washington DC to ask for special guidance on anything. Everything was pretty apropos the way it ought to be. So we had nothing there to really share with you, and that's what I basically say on those few pages right there. But if you jump to page 14, we start diving into our recommendations. And you heard me say when we were talking about the internal control testing that we had two findings, and they were adjustment-related. The first finding we had had to do with receivables. In government, there's a lot of do-to, do-froms. Pretend that each one of you all represent a fund of the government of Columbus. You might be SPOSS, you might be the other SPOSS, you might be a debt service fund, he's the general fund, we're just all across the board, we've got all these funds, correct? And as part of that, as a happy family, we move money around, we share it, and we'll loan you money over here so that you can do this, and you'll loan it to us. We got to a point when we dove into this this year, we looked at it with management, and we had concerns about collectibility. When it came to some funds that actually owed another fund, it's like, well, how's that fund going to ever pay that? And with that challenge, we ended up determining together that that probably is something we need to address, okay? If it's not going to be able to be paid anytime soon, if ever, maybe we need to write it off. And so what happened is, is that we, as management, and these are the representation of management, these statements, it was determined that we needed to write something off and treat it as a July 1st of 2017 opening change to fund balance in these funds. So what that means is, is the general fund, who most funds owed money to the general fund, it actually took the write-off. But by taking that write-off, the other funds looked better, okay? So as we wrote something off, if the medical center fund owed the general fund, by writing it off, the medical center fund looked better now, it looks like it ought to, and the general fund takes it on the chin. Doing all that, nothing changed in the whole household, but we cleaned up how the funds looked individually. The household, nothing changed, okay? But we had some adjustments. And because we as auditors are required to opine on individual funds, we have to then therefore treat it as a restatement and have a finding relative to it, okay? That's the nature of what we had here. It's not unusual. A lot of the times we do first-time audits, we have these kind of things come up, and if they're material, we have to make such restatements. Is there any kind of question? I get the impression there might be.
Not a question, but just to comment, the medical center fund, I believe you used, was not a good example, but what would be a good example would be the Civic Center or the Golf Authority.
Or the what?
Golf Authority or Civic Center. The medical fund would be the hospital, the county hospital.
Okay. You're right, the golf courses.
We do three meals with them, and that's enough. That's, so I just wanted to make the point so that before you go further
I got you, that's fine.
That Golf Authority, Civic Center, and you're familiar with all of that, but he used that as just an example.
It was, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a sensitive.
But you use your example better with the better example.
Yeah.
When you've got a golf course that owes the general fund.
Depending on any government that has a golf course that makes money. I've never seen it. And so when a golf course owes money to the general fund, you have to say, how are y'all going to pay that? And we're not really sure, okay? Then maybe we need to go ahead and deal with it. And so that's what we ended up doing.
Excuse me, I've got another question from Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Edwards, I see it looks like there were eight of these funds that had an adjustment. Is that typical? Is that unusual? Is that worrisome to you as the auditor at all that there were that number?
I mean, you've got two answers to that question. It is not unusual for us to come in and have these kind of adjustments. I mean, everywhere I go, large or small, you ask Augusta, Georgia, Macon, Georgia, Gwinnett County, Mr. AAA-rated Gwinnett County, the first time we did that audit, we had a bunch of prior period adjustments. So this is not unusual to have a new look at things and make these changes. Now, does it worry me? Was your second part of the question? Not at all. Because the beautiful thing about this, there's no lingering effect. It's not like we're sitting here saying, you've got a problem and it's going to take years to fix. It's been fixed. It's done. After talking to management, we were able to determine that this was the right answer, and we've reflected inside this CAFR, and there's no more lingering effect to it. So no, it doesn't worry me at all, especially as I talked to management, we got on the same page about what the resolve needed to be. I feel much better about things upon doing that, so.
And as I understand, one of the things that you said, by doing this, it does not change the bottom line.
Of the whole government, of the whole family.
Of the entire
That's right.
accounts that we have.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Just, and one quick comment. In my presentation, as a response to the audit findings here, which was regarding the Um, in my presentation, as a response to the audit findings here, which was regarding the recording of the receivables, um, I don't, uh, council may recall in FY fourteen, we actually did recognize the change in the standards. And this is where, you know, Miller and I had some discussion about the interpretation of what that meant, because at that time, we, um, recorded the adjustment as, um, based on our interpretation and at the recommendation of our external auditors at that time. So that's why there's no overall adjustment to the accounts, because we've already recognized it from an unassigned fund balance standpoint. It's just now we're doing it differently based on the recommendation of our new auditor, so.
Yeah.
I guess one of the major parts of my questioning to you was, is this troublesome to you?
No.
When you say no, that, that's reassuring.
And it's no, you know, it's kind of like, in, in years where, you know, the Golf Authority didn't, and we said, you know, we're, we've gotta put in three hundred thousand, but you're gonna owe us that money. Well, we know we're not gonna get that money. That, or the Civic Center, or those agencies, uh, such as that, so, but we.
It's a cleaner and truer picture of what we're doing at the end of the year, just to reconcile some of the funds that weren't quite self-sustaining.
That's right.
Correct.
That's correct.
That's correct. We were expensing those deficits over time.
Yeah.
And so instead of doing that process, now we've expensed it all.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear on that, and it wasn't the indigent care deal, so, but anyway, that was just an example, yeah.
Thank you. Clear as mud, right now. No, I, I do think things are better. And I think, you know, like Angelica said, you all had already attempted to do this by using it as a, uh, a reserve fund balance approach in the past, and what we wanna do is just get it off the balance sheet entirely. Um, and, and as was just mentioned about an example, you know, when you're gonna give money to someone to go buy golf carts, you know, if you don't think you're gonna get it paid back, if it's gonna take twenty years to get it back, maybe we oughta just go ahead and gift it and never forget about it, you know? Never forget about it, but let's keep our general fund clean as much as possible. And that's what we were trying to do, and I'm satisfied with everything, and again, there's no lingering effects to this at all. I think it's a better picture, uh, by fund. Each fund looks more appropriate. Um, looking at the next page, item number two toward the bottom, we also, uh, worked with the management to determine there needed to be a restatement having to do with accrued interest. In the past, you've had debt, like most governments do, you've got your share of debt. At the fund level, like at the general fund level, you don't accrue interest. That's one of the craziest things you'll ever hear in governmental accounting, but at modified accrual, you don't accrue interest, even if it's due tomorrow. Even if a million dollar interest payment's due tomorrow, you don't accrue it until it's due. But when you go to the entity-wide level, when you go to the full accrual picture, which is what I opened up with when I talked about seven hundred twenty-eight million and three eighty-six and all that, that you are supposed to accrue interest. And the trouble was, that didn't get converted in the past. So we had an adjustment that we needed to make to the entity-wide level for about three million, and unfortunately, that's deemed to be material, which results in this being a restatement finding. Just like what you asked in a moment ago, does that give me any consternation? Not at all. We're clean now, we're on the right page, and there was nothing malicious or anything about what they were doing. It just didn't get converted the right way, but we're good, we're golden going forward. And it, it doesn't affect your general fund, that's just the entity-wide. That's when I'm trying to look at everything, all the funds together as one. So I think we're good to go on that, too. Uh, you're not gonna see these two findings again. It would be something really, really strange if you were to see that again, so. Um, as you go to page sixteen, we have left the concept of findings, and now we're just looking at management points. Take it or leave it kind of points, do what you want to kind of points, but things that we see that you might wanna consider doing some change. Um, one of the things has to do with the agency funds, when we went to the magistrate court and the superior court's offices. When you go to the magistrate, they've got a very old system, and we learned from experience and in talking to them, it crashes a lot. And you know as well as I do, you ever like it when your computer crashes? Is it a lot of fun to have to try to find that information and reinvent what you did all day long? We would just say that you need to get with that court and see if there's anything that needs to be done in the magistrate court to maybe upgrade the system to where it becomes a more reliable system that doesn't have the potential of crashes and those kind of things. So, again, just a recommendation. At the Superior Court's office, kind of the contrary, most of what they do over there, not most, a large part of what they do over there is handwritten. We're talking manual. Um, I don't know about y'all, but I'm human and I make mistakes. And when you start getting to the manual nature of accounting, that's when mistakes happen. And we would recommend that that court and you all look and see if there's something that we need to do to enhance the accounting over there and not let it be so manual and handwritten form, but have it be something a little bit more automated. So again, just a recommendation. Uh, go ahead.
Uh, our finance director will be responding to these, and you know we've got a new court management system going in, so.
Okay. Again, all this is as of June thirtieth, so what you may have done to correct things since then, we haven't incorporated. We're kind of snapshotting this time that we were looking at. Item number two is old outstanding checks at the magistrate's court as well. There are checks that are old and outstanding that have not been cashed by the party they were written to, going back to two thousand ten. Well, in Georgia, we've got these things called a sheet laws, unclaimed property laws, and all we're recommending to you is maybe get with your legal counsel, get with that court, find out exactly what we got, and see if there's anything that we might, that we may have to give to the Department of Revenue under the name of unclaimed property. So, again, nothing to lose sleep over. Uh, on the next page, page seventeen, item three, segregation duties at the agency funds. You do have in magistrate, superior, and probate municipal court, some segregation duties issues. You've got situations where one person is in charge of a wide variety of accounting, you know, from reconciling statements to signing checks to preparing deposits. Probably oughta find a way that we can break that up somehow. I would just ask you all to talk to those different courts and see if there's anything that can be done to mitigate any concerns there, so. Um, item four is similar at the Board of Commissioners' office itself. Uh, your finance director is currently the one that does the bank reconciliation for the pooled cash accounts. In a perfect world, we need to have somebody else do that. Um, so I, I, I would ask management to take a look at that, see if there's any other way that we could have another person involved in that area.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I think it keeps responding, knowing.
That, um, there's gonna be a response, but we've had conversation with you about the finance director reconciling for the time being, and the deputy city manager, over, well, being that person, that independent person until we get another person in the finance department. You know, we've had that conversation. And so that's, that's how it's done, but his report is correct.
I'm, I'm talking to y'all, I want you to be in a perfect world, I wanna live in utopia.
Absolutely.
And so.
Best, best, I mean, great job.
That, that's what we're trying to address here. If we're trying to be a utopian Columbus, we wanna have the right controls everywhere. That one, I think we might take a look at. Um, item five has to do with the budgets. You've got these, uh, four tax allocation districts. State law requires them to have a budget, we didn't have a budget. I think that's easy to address, let's create a budget. Even if, even if we're at mid-year right now without one, I think management can put one together, bring it to you all for incorporation into the overall budgets of all funds. Uh, again, that should be easy to address. Number six, debt transactions. This is a accountant nerd speak right here. Uh, when you all issue bonds and you've got premiums and discounts relative to those bond debts, the standard is actually do it using something called effective interest, which is more closely resembles interest expense itself. You all are using what's called straight line, you're just taking the amount divided by the life and acting like it's a straight-line depreciation. It's not materially different, but it's different, and I just would recommend y'all take a look at that, see if there's another way of doing it going forward. Number seven, in the Sheriff's Department, we noted there are two accounts used by the jail, the inmate and the commissary fund, for which those accounts were not previously included in the total agency cash. Uh, when we started asking questions about, well, where's your jail, commissary fund, they're like, well, we don't keep that on the books, that's separate. And we're like, nah, it needs to be a part of this whole thing. So again, just wanna share with you, there were two cash accounts that have not been incorporated in the past that are now a part of those agency funds. The last thing we've got, as far as the recommendations, on page eighteen, and this is purely a recommendation. You've got five component units that are audited by other auditors. A good example, the Water Works, the Hospital Authority, and those type of entities. This happens with a lot of governments that are county governments, where they have a lot of component units like this. I would strongly urge you all to work with those entities to see if you can come up with a timetable that has them present their audits to you all far in advance of when your audit is due. Um, it doesn't, it's not very good feeling to be sitting here on December thirty-first trying to get this thing out the door, and we've just gotten an audit over the weekend that we've got to incorporate into this. It doesn't leave you much time to qualitatively look at things. If I'm in your shoes, since you're the parent of all of these other governments, I think it's fair to ask them to maybe provide an audit to you by December first that you can then incorporate into. I'll tell you, the state of Georgia does that at the state level. If you're auditing Lotto or Georgia State Financing Investment Commission, those audits have to be issued by nine-thirty. So the state's June thirty audit can incorporate those with ease. The Georgia Port Starter that I audit, it's issued by nine-thirty every year to do this. All I'm asking is if we can have them by ten, twelve, one, I think it'd help everybody involved. So that's it on the recommendation side there. The rest of this, I won't bore you into great detail. The rest of the pages are for your bedside table reading. If you need help going to sleep, I'd say start reading page nineteen and go forward, and you should be done in a page or two. Um, there are new standards out there. If you haven't noticed, GASB, that's the financial reporting, uh, party that issues all these standards that we have to follow, they have stayed very busy. They issued something called GASB thirty-four that was supposed to be the end-all, be-all standard in June of ninety-nine, remember that, Pam? They've issued now ninety standards. They've issued fifty-six new standards since that one was issued, uh, nineteen years ago. They aren't slowing down, they've got more coming. And so what I've got in the rest of this document is to advise primarily management as to new standards are coming that are gonna affect this government. Make sure you stay on top of it, don't get behind, don't be in a reactive mode. And I know, we've talked enough about it, but I wanted to let you all know as well. The last thing included in here is just to let you know, we have a lot of continuing education we provide. Since March of oh-nine, we have provided to our government clients free quarterly CPE. Anybody is welcome to come. If you wanna come, if you wanna come, if anybody wants to come, just let us know, we'll put you on our address list, and you can be invited quarterly to our CPE that we have in different locations across Georgia. We usually have about a hundred people show up per quarter. It's been a very successful and very, very good thing to provide to our clients. Now that you're a client, we sure hope we can see you at some of these type of things.
Well, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I think Counselor Woodson has a question.
First of all, thank you very much for the report, it was very pleasing. I was nervous sitting here and see what's gonna happen, but made it sound like our, um, finance department and our government and department heads are doing a very good job, and they should be, um, thankful for that, and we're very grateful. Um, this cannot be, this report cannot be this successful without their hard work, their willingness to listen, their willingness to adjust, to be able to ensure the well-being of our citizens and our government. So to you and our staff, I say thank you, too. I have one question, and that was probably addressing it probably to the city manager or city attorney, I'm not sure. On page eighteen, where, um, he was mentioning that we should get those reports by December first from all the entities that we're supposed to give, is that an amendment that we would have to do to an ordinance? Or is that just something that our finance, um, director can just direct everybody to say, going forward, we have a new auditor, we have a new process in two thousand nineteen, by December first, we need all your reports?
Mr. Mayor, uh, and, and that's a, a good question. Um, wha- what I intend to do is bring something back that would be officially adopted by this body, because exactly what he has talked about, we have had that problem with some of our affiliate agencies in the past that was going to cost us, and, and we were prepared to try and pass the cost on to them. Uh, but I, I think excellent report, but, yeah, I intend to bring something that it will be official, and it comes from this legislative body.
Okay, thank you, 'cause I think that's important based on the information you provided and, and I have mentioned today that we're all on the same page, especially when we're responsible for the taxpayers' dollars.
Absolutely.
So, um, thank you very much to everyone, and again, to the staff, congratulations for a job well done.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, this, uh, was a, um, kind of an emergency transition from, um, the previous auditor to Malden and Jenkins, and, um, you've done an excellent job bringing forward this report today. Um, and I, I feel like I just sat through a physical exam. You know?
Okay, I've never been compared to that, but I'll, I'll, that'll give me something to reflect on the way home.
But, but it was a, it was a fiscal checkup, and, uh, they were fresh eyes and very thorough detail, um, and, um, you know, I, I really appreciate.
Well, thank you.
Uh, the report that you provided today, and, uh, he, he noted that, um, uh, we have a, a large government, and we do. And he noted three billions, uh, three-quarters of a billion dollars being managed, and a net worth of three hundred forty-two million dollars, and, and he comes with a, with clean opinions, unmodified audit report. Um, and, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I, I, I really, just to follow with Counselor Woodson, uh, want to thank our, um, professional, uh, award-winning staff uh, for the job that they do, uh, they truly do a good job, and I'm proud of them.
Well, I. Absolutely, and I thi- and I think, you know, sometimes, sometimes out of a, a, sort of a, a, an unfortunate happenstance, we end up with a positive, uh, action. And I think that the, the fact that we, on the spur of the moment, called in, uh, your firm, and y'all did such a thorough, uh, job of, of looking, looking at our financial situation, I think that was a good thing. Uh, I think it's, it's comforting to me, and it should be, and I imagine it's the rest of the elected officials that, you know, fresh eyes caught a few things we could be doing better. But the bottom line is that, that, uh, our financial practices are sound, uh, they're transparent, and they're designed to make sure that the citizen's money is not only spent well, but it's also accounted for very carefully. So, yeah, there's some things that I think, and I think all of your recommendations make great, great sense. Um, it, it just sort of cleans it up, makes it a little bit, little bit more clear, so. Counselor Day?
Yes, sir.
I would echo some of the comments I've already done said, but I would think in any corporation or large entity, I mean, you gotta realize this is what a, just for numbers, like two-hundred-and-eighty-million-dollar, uh, budget, uh, government municipality here, that you've got a lot of moving parts. And sometimes I don't think people understand that, a lot of moving parts. So, we do, we've always had, as long as I've been on council, we've had, uh, we've had great oversight there, we've had a lot of people, good people that are looking at it, and the thing about it is that, uh, you know, I, what I appreciate is you being straightforward, thorough, you've offered a lot of detailed information, but at the same time, you have the confidence to present it appropriately, and, and then it's, uh, the city's job to take it from there. But that's how it should be, and that's how it works across the board. I would probably be really concerned if there was nothing that showed up. Matter of fact, over the years, a lot of us have talked about that, really, there was nothing that had showed up, and then we, you know, I think all talked about pushing it a little bit more to, to make sure everything is at the forefront. So I appreciate that, and I have confidence that our folks that work for the city and the citizens of Columbus will, uh, will address it. They always have, and they've done a good job, and they're, uh, they take it serious and they're professionals. But I thank you for presenting it. You, uh, verbally, you, you gave us a lot of information at, at a tremendous speed, so, it's like the city manager said, you, I feel like I went through class myself, so I just wrote a bunch of notes here.
Sure.
But I've got some questions that I would like to ask you, just if you can go over, and, and I just kind of saved them for this moment. I think you're finished with your presentation, right?
I am.
Okay, and I'd like to ask you these. You, you talked about, there was one matter, I think it, did you say it was the, uh, dealing with the pension or whatever? But it was an accounting matter that changed, that now reflects as a liability in the, uh, in the audit report. And it didn't seem like you were really concerned about it, but my question would be along the lines. I'm not really sure where this liability is recorded, but the question would be, does it affect, does it affect our bond rating, does it affect our bond issuances, does it affect the ability to borrow money or to go out and to, to do, uh, projects and so forth? What, what, I mean, help me understand that change, that accounting change, and how it really, where it's recorded, and what it really affects, or if it affects anything at all.
Well, for you all, it's mostly recorded at the entity-wide level. At the modified accrual level, which is your general fund, your SPOSS, and those type of funds, those special revenue funds, debt service, it's not included in there. But when you go to the entity-wide, you have to include your pension liability that's net of its assets that it's holding. You have to also do the same thing with what's called OPEB, other post-employment benefits. The pension standard came out about four years ago that the city had to adopt at that time, that the government had to adopt at the time. Now, this year, you had to adopt this new one for the other post-employment benefits. You had a liability on there, but with this new standard, it had to change, and it actually went up in size. Yes, on one side, you might sit there and say, well, gosh, that's a large liability, you're talking a hundred ninety-one million dollars, which calls our unrestricted deficit. Okay, but every government's going through that, and what that is reflecting is, you're gonna have some demands on your cash flows going forward, okay? But it's not like you've got a current debt due. It's not like you've got a note payable that says, this thing's due next year. It's something that's gonna be paid over, the pension, it's probably gonna be paid over sixty years. You're talking about someone who's working here today, who's built a vested amount, who's gonna work here another twenty years, who might retire for twenty-five years. So you've got a big wide range. It's one reason why I don't like the liability to be owned there, but I understand where GASB came from. But when they did that, most governments had to take it on the chin. It's not often you put a liability on the books with no asset, okay? And that's what happened with those two standards. Let me give you a little tidbit on, on the pension and the OPEB. Your pension plans are right now about seventy-one percent funded. When you look across all those pension plans that you have, you're seventy-one percent funded. That might be a little lower than average. Average right now has been about seventy-eight percent this last year. The market kind of went down, and some governments were sitting eighty-two, eighty-three, it's come down. Your OPEB, and let me just say, and that doesn't give me any kind of consternation, you're, you're within the realm of reason right there. Your OPEB is only, let's get this, it's only a sixty-million-dollar liability, okay? The city I was at this morning, that's a little bit smaller than y'all, has a hundred and thirty-nine million, okay? So you've got a lot less of a pill to swallow over the next thirty, forty years than that other community does. Um, you don't have OPEB hardly funded, of the sixty million, you've. Of the sixty million, you've only got about one and a half million of assets in there. The challenge that a lot of governments are gonna have over the next few years is the concept of possibly funding OPEB like we've been funding pension. And the question is, should we, should we not? Right now, you've been offering OPEB for years, probably since fifty years ago, but it's always been on a pay-as-you-go basis, like ninety-nine point nine percent of all governments, they've been on a pay-as-you-go basis. So putting this standard on there is causing everybody to have to put in a big dollar amount. State of Georgia is about to have to put a twenty-billion-dollar amount, that was with a B, twenty billion on their books for OPEB. Imagine what that's gonna do to their equity situation.
So i- is this recorded in the pension fund, or where is this liability recorded?
It's recognized at your entity-wide level. When you go to the statements and you see the first couple of statement pages that we've got after the management discussion and analysis.
Right.
You get to the balance sheet, called a statement of net position. It has a government activities column, a business type column, and a total. Look in that total, and that's where you're gonna see the liabilities that I'm talking about.
But it doesn't, it doesn't affect our bond ratings or anything like that?
At the bond level concept, I think the bond rating people have seen this and known it was there for years, okay? They've seen it in the footnotes. There's been information in the footnotes for years about what our unfunded status is at every government for OPEB and pension. So they've known it was there, it's just now put front and center, and every bond rating person I talk to kind of does, we've known that was there, it's just on the balance sheet now, it doesn't really affect anything.
Well, what I heard you say about the reserve, it probably doesn't really matter at that point.
Right.
With the numbers that you were stating, so.
Yeah.
Let me, let me get in your mind a little bit here to understand what exactly you were thinking about. You, you stated, you were talking about property taxes and sales taxes?
Yes.
The ratio, you, thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight, thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Right.
Well, I sensed, you didn't really go into detail, but I sensed that there was an alert there, that alarmed you or something?
It's no alert.
What were you thinking? It should be reversed?
Like I said, like I said at the time, every government I go to looks different. The other government I went to today, property taxes were fifty percent of their revenue strength. And they asked me the question, is that good or bad? I said, you just have to look at your situation, the demand on your services that the community wants to have, and how are you gonna get there? Do they want to have higher sales taxes? Do they want to have higher property taxes? Do they want to have higher fees across the board in different areas? There is no right or wrong.
Are you, let me, let me get a little bit more to my point. Are you concerned about the fluctuation in property taxes? I mean, if you're at fifty percent, depending on your tax structure, that could fluctuate depending on if a recession comes, but what about if you're in our situation and it doesn't fluctuate?
I would, I think property taxes is a very stable base of revenue typically. You can have recessionary effects, and we've all lived through those moments, we've had to do the rollbacks and go look at things from a new angle. But property taxes is actually a pretty stable amount of revenue. It doesn't change typically in most governments drastically. The most drastic change-
Well, it did in two thousand eight, though, right?
Well, some, but I tell you what's more drastic, go back in time and look at sales taxes. And if you remember, about fifteen years ago, we had a, state of Georgia, a general assembly person out of Carrollton, that was wanting to get rid of property taxes and have nothing but sales taxes. Do y'all remember that? I am so glad that didn't happen. Can you imagine if all you had was sales taxes and no property taxes? Can you imagine how volatile your revenues would be year in and year out, just depending on what the recession's doing?
And that goes to the second part of my question, so you're not really concerned about those ratios, but then you go over to the sales tax side at thirty-eight percent. You know we have two dedicated penny, perpetual pennies, that that revenue will come in perpetually.
Well, we can only hope. I mean, that's, that's the idea. And again, only you all can decide, and your citizens, as to is that what we want to continue to do?
Well, looking, understanding that and looking at the thirty-one, thirty-eight, should, were you saying that the property tax is appropriate, or should it be higher, should it be lower?
I'm not saying either one. I'm just sharing with you, just for digestion purposes.
Okay.
That you're at thirty-one, thirty-eight. There is no right or wrong.
Okay, that helps me a little bit better. Mr. City Manager, I did see in this report, there were a couple of red flags, I think, that we need to, we need to address internally, so I'm glad it was noted. And I'll, I'll be glad to talk to you a little bit more in detail about that, but.
Are you referencing the eight findings?
Yes.
Because our finance director's wanting to respond to those tonight.
Okay, that's good. Do you, do you cover any of the, in, any of the agencies, such as the Golf Authority, the Development Authority, or do you do the audits there, or something?
We do the audits of anything that's not audited by others. Right now, you have audits that are done by other auditors on, let me see if I can get that exactly for you. Your Columbus Water Works is audited by other auditors. Your Hospital Authority is audited by other auditors. Your Department of Public Health is audited by other auditors. Your Convention and Visitors Bureau is audited by other auditors. And last, but not least, is your Airport Commission. Those five entities are audited by other auditors.
Yeah, so what we require is that they-
Consolidate.
Have annual audits.
Right.
And that they provide us a copy of those audits, and that's what they do.
Okay.
And then we incorporate those audits as part of our audit strategy of what else is remaining to be audited.
Well, I'm glad to see that's a recommendation, that they all report in a timely manner along with, with this report. That's good.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And, and so, Mr. Mayor, if there are no questions from council at this time, we're gonna have our finance director respond.
It may answer a lot of questions folks have anyway, so.
All right, hello again. So I won't belabor this point, this was actually something that was mentioned a moment ago, but in, in response to the audit finding regarding our receivables, just again, in FY fourteen, we changed our, how we recognize fund balance as it relates to those internal loans, those due to, due from other funds, and based on our interpretation of the accounting standards and the recommendation of our external auditors at that time, we handled the auditing, implementing the auditing standard as we did, which was basically taking it out of unassigned fund balance, so it's not counted towards the days that we calculate, and putting it in another fund balance bucket. And over time, we were just expensing what they owe to us over a period of time. And so what we've done this year is just expensed all of that off this one time, so we'll no longer do that misagenation on an annual basis, and there was no impact to unassigned fund balance, because we'd already taken it from unassigned fund balance. So it wasn't money that we were planning to use or trying to use at, at any point after FY fourteen. The second audit finding regarding the accrued interest on long-term debt, you know, new eyes, new perspective, so, you know, although this wasn't a finding previously, we have implemented additional procedures to ensure that we accrue the interest as recommended. So regarding the management letter points, the eight points that Mr. Edwards was just referring to, as far as the accounting system for the agency funds, the city recognized that we were in dire need of a court management system. It was old, it was outdated, and it was in need of an upgrade. We have been in the project planning phase for a comprehensive upgrade since FY seventeen. We've been setting aside money since FY seventeen for this new system, and we are currently in the implementation phase. Back just the last quarter of two thousand eighteen, council approved us moving forward with Tyler Technologies for a new comprehensive, fully-integrated court management system. And this implementation is scheduled to be completed in two thousand twenty, and we do anticipate that this new cloud-based, web-based system will alleviate any concerns pertaining to potential data loss. Again, it's cloud-based, so it's not housed on our servers, it's housed up in the clouds, and there are significant backup, backups for disaster recovery. So we also feel that this new system will increase the accuracy in the data that's being reported by these courts. And so that, again, happened after June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen. The second point, as far as the old outstanding checks regarding the agency funds, although the finance department does not have direct oversight of these funds, what we are willing to do in consultation with the city attorney's office is help the magistrate court with the disposition of those old items, as far as providing guidance and advice regarding the state's unclaimed property program. This is actually something that we've done at the request of Chief Judge McBride for child support payments in adult probation. So we've done this before, we've assisted another agency within the government, so we're willing to lend that assistance to magistrate court as well. Regarding the segregation of duties for the agency funds, again, the finance department has no direct oversight of these funds, but we will meet with the courts to discuss the duties that are required for their operations, and see if the, the segregation of duties as suggested is possible with the current staffing levels. Of course, you know, we need people, and I think that's all over this government. You could probably hear from several courts that will tell you that they could use some extra hands, so I, we, I am willing to sit down with the courts, and we can go through that as we gear up for the FY twenty budget process, and sort of talk about some of the segregation of duties, and see what we can maybe help them rearrange or shift with their current staffing levels.
Yeah, we've made it. I mean, it really is kind of tough for, for some of those, some of those courts, just because they've, they've continually, you know, as we all have, asked, asked departments to do more with less, and sometimes that's almost a physical impossibility. So appreciate anything you can do from finance department's area.
Yes, sir. So regarding the segregation of duties for the government, this really pertains to the reconciliation, the bank reconciliation being performed by myself. I have extensive knowledge of performing the bank reconciliation. I've done that task for several years here, and so, and with staffing changes within the finance departments, you, you get a person, and you think they're going to, you know, assume this responsibility, and then, you know, something happens, they leave, things don't work out, so then it comes back on to the finance director to perform. I can say that I've recently hired another member, another staff member to perform this task, and as training is ongoing, I myself will obviously continue to perform this as it transitions to the, to the, to the new person with direct oversight from the deputy city manager of finance, because she also knows how to perform bank reconciliation for the city.
Okay. Counselor Thomas?
I'm glad to hear, Ms. Alexander, that, that you're looking into this. I think that this item, in conjunction with item two, I mean, item three, the segregation of duties in these other places, that we, as the city government, ought to lead the way. We ought to show how it can and should be done. So if the finding in both of these instances is, you've got to separate these duties, I'm glad to see that you are taking steps to do that, because I, I want us to say, do as we do, not as we say. And so that I'm, I'm glad that we're leading the way in this, in this particular one.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I absolutely agree, Counselor Thomas, we, we need to lead the way, and, and I do want to say that we recognized this problem early on, and, and that's why when she was going to have to go back to reconcile, and we brought in the deputy city manager, who's the previous finance director, who oversees finance in, in another building, to oversee her, or watchdog her reconciliation, so, but we, we need to fix it internally within that department, and you're absolutely correct.
So, to point number five, regarding the budget process and reporting, this was the no budget being adopted for the tasks. Due to the implementation of the new property tax software ISWOR, reporting related to the tax allocation districts was not readily available at the time of budget adoption. However, through the concerted efforts of the Tax Commissioner's Office, and I say, they've put forth a lot of efforts to manually figure out, to provide reporting to us regarding the tax allocation districts. But going forward, we will have, or should have, the information that we need to establish a reasonable budget during the upcoming budget cycle for all tax allocation districts as required.
Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Alexander, I, I guess I need a little clarification about the budget that you're talking about.
Uh huh.
What is included in, I mean, is this a budget of how we're gonna spend all of the money that we spend in tax district one, or what, what, what are you budgeting, I guess is my question?
Well, essentially, right now, we would be budgeting the amount of expected revenues that we anticipate we'll receive in each of the tax allocation districts. I mean, we don't have any expenditures right now, because we don't have any approved projects. Council has not approved any projects, so it would honestly be, honestly be revenue, anticipated revenue.
So it's just, how, how much money are we gonna collect from tax allocation district one, and how much are we collecting from tax allocation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's not to go to the next step to say, and this is how we're gonna spend this money in this particular tax allocation district?
Right, no, not at this time.
I just wanted to be clear in my mind. Thank you.
So regarding item number six, regarding the amortization methodology, we, again, this has not been an issue previously, but we are very responsive to the recommendations of our new auditors, and we have changed our amortization methodology from the straight-line method to the effective interest method as suggested. In regards to item number seven, as far as the jail funds, again, this is another one of those accounts that the finance department has no direct oversight over. The jail inmate and commissary funds have been audited on an annual basis by external auditors, and, and this is usually done at the request of the sheriff, since these accounts are typically outside of our standard audit process. And to our knowledge, all funds were included in, in prior years, all funds were included in the total agency's cash, since there was a special audit conducted for these accounts. Now, we know, as Mr. Edwards mentioned, he said they weren't included, but they were, they are included as of June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen, and going forward, we'll make sure that they are included. And so the last item is the component unit financial information. This is very important to us. We rely very heavily on receiving the information from our component units in a very timely fashion. We will send written communication to all the component units, and I like that the city manager has suggested that we take it further and get it officially adopted by city council, as far as the timeline in which they are to provide their financial information to us, because we were trying to get this information on Christmas Eve, so.
And I, again, I'd like for council to officially adopt it, because I've had to send some real ugly letters to some agencies because of delays in getting that information to us, but.
Adopt as, as a, as a part of a resolution, or?
Yeah, well, whatever the city attorney suggests, resolution or ordinance, but we need to get something from this legislative body.
You know, it wouldn't, it may not hurt if, if we looked at our entire fiscal process from the budget, the typical budget timeline, all the way through the CAFR, and when, when our, our components need to bring their, their audits to us, and just put it all in a resolution, so that we sort of codified a, a timeline that we're all using as, as a baseline to move forward, so I think that'd be a good idea. We've got, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, I think something like that, that's gonna be a guideline, would be better in a resolution. That way you could modify it quickly if you needed to. It may vary from one year to another, depending on some unforeseen circumstance, but you can do that in a resolution.
Okay. Counselor Thomas?
And I would include in that, we are supposed to, for example, get a budget, an audit report from those entities that collect the motel, hotel motel tax, and to give them a specific deadline, too, in that same resolution might, might prove to say, everybody has the same, or a standard, whatever that might be.
Okay.
And that is all that I have in terms of presentation. I'll take any question if council has any.
I think they've been hitting you as, as they go. Any other questions about the responses to the findings? And Jessica, thank you. And Malden Jenkins, the representative, thank you all very much.
Let me just put one statement out there, one last thought. It is fair to think that all of these management points and findings go away next year. You may hear from me next year and have me say you have no management points or findings. I don't think this is all going to be rocket science and things that we're going to have to really turn places upside down. I think we've had a great enough dialogue with management that I'm quite confident that all of this will not be here next year, so.
Well, good. Well, we appreciate your efforts, and we appreciate a fresh set eye, a fresh look at it. Thank you. All right. We have asked our internal auditor to perform, he's got a number of audits on his radar screen, but he's got a couple that he's going to present now, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Redmond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney. It's good to be here tonight to present to you a final report on the internal audit of the Health and Wellness Center. This audit was requested in May of last year, following the presentation by Benefit Consulting Firm Shaw Hankins. We looked at quite a few areas of their operation, but we focused more, not just so much on the numbers, because they gave us a lot of detail on numbers and statistics, but we looked more at some of the other areas in terms of the quality of service and the satisfaction level of our employees and their covered dependents. You may recall a little bit of background, Shaw Hankins, our Benefit Consultant, recommended CARE ATC to manage the CCG Health and Wellness Center back in June of 2016. They made some, recommended some benefit design changes for the pre-865 plans on the health care, reducing from three options to two, eliminating an HMO plan and creating two new point-of-service plans, the Gold and Silver Plan. Previously, we also had one plan that was dedicated to the Health and Wellness Center as the primary care provider, and that benefit change effective January 1 of 17, about two years ago, allowed any person in any of our plans to participate and use the Health and Wellness Center. And this has increased the participation therein. The city contribution is based on a set percentage of the employee cost of the Silver Plan, with the same dollar contribution being applied to the Gold Plan. The Shaw Hankins Healthcare Plan Overview presented on May 1 of this past year included an overview of providing statistics on chronic disease management and efforts to manage chronic disease, claims analysis of aggregate claims filed, and cost trends of health care plan for the past five years versus regional and national averages. And you may recall that their graph showed that we had actually been flat for the last three years in terms of the rate of increase in our cost of our overall health care programs, as compared to regional and national standards of seven to 10% on the medical side and about 15% annually for prescription drugs. The Health and Wellness Center has saved the city in this last year and its employees $882,000. That was during fiscal '17, of which $566,000 was on office visits and $316,000 on the prescription drug cost. These savings were achieved with only 20% of our employees and 5% of the covered dependents using the Health and Wellness Center. Now, when I looked at that, I thought, that's great that we achieved those kinds of savings, but what if we had 80% or 100% included? That savings could have been four or five million dollars, and it still could be. So we looked at it with a goal to increase the cost savings and reduce total health care plan expenditures. The auditors focused on four areas: increased participation in the Health and Wellness Center, wellness and prevention programs, expanded disease management programs, and additional opportunities for direct contracting. The city currently contracts with Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield, which was formerly Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia, for administration and enrollment and claims and use of its contracted provider networks and network pricing, including its negotiated discounts. Currently, Blue Cross Blue Shield has the largest market share in Georgia of any non-governmental program. As such, they're able to use their tremendous buying power to achieve much greater discounts off the price of the care than have been able to be afforded to other providers. So that works out best for us. It gives us the broadest network, but at the same time, it gives us the lowest pricing because of the higher discounts. The city operates the Health and Wellness Center, which is managed by CARE ATC, which provides a significant amount of visits for a fixed cost and supplies in generic drugs at wholesale cost. High-volume services such as laboratory and radiology are direct contracted at very discounted prices in exchange for guaranteed and quick payment. You might say, well, why would they sell them to us cheaper than they would sell it to Blue Cross Blue Shield? But actually, they will, because when they do business with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, there's a lot of medical review procedures, there's a lot of denied claims that they don't think are necessary services and what have you. Our situation with them is very different. When one of our providers at the Health and Wellness Center writes an order slip, and the employee or their dependent takes it over there to, for example, the Columbus Diagnostic Center for CAT scan, they know that as soon as they perform that scan and send the results back, they send the statement back marked that it's been completed, and it's going to be immediate, rather immediately paid by CARE ATC. Turn me back on. That's an important factor in the whole thing, and that's why they will do a better deal for us than they will someone else. Let's look in at the comprehensive report. We talked about that. Let's go on to the next page. Our plan has leveled out, as I said earlier, and I want to recognize that this benefit design plan came from Shaw Hankins' recommendations, and CARE ATC implemented the portion of it for the Health and Wellness Center. This was a joint effort of the CCG Administration, City Council, Shaw Hankins, and CARE ATC, and they've generated positive results for our city. Customer comment cards on the Health and Wellness Care Center that we gather and collect at your direction. We've done that since day one of its operation. I want to share with you the results from this year's surveys. Bruce, can you turn my thing back on? Okay, there we go. The, we look at eight specific items, and then we have a ninth one, which is kind of an open-ended comment section. The first thing we look at is the time to schedule an appointment, and this really measures accessibility and capacity of the Health and Wellness Center. When people call in for an appointment, 39% can get one on the same day that they called. 52% can get it the next day. That takes care of 91% will be seen within 36 hours of when they call, depending on when it is, what time of day they make that call. That is phenomenal. I think if you think about your own doctor's offices that you use, if you're not at the Health and Wellness Center, you'll probably think, mine's not quite that good. Another 8% fall within the three-to-seven-day category, and there's 1% that's over seven days. And I would suggest, after looking at it, that more than likely, those were requested that way by the person when they said they couldn't get in today or tomorrow. They said, okay, how about next Monday or Tuesday or whatever? It's more convenient for them. All right. Our second point is how was the care you received today, which is a level of customer satisfaction, at least it's their perception of satisfaction. 85% rated excellent, another 10%, very good, 2% good, one fair, and two poor. That's 95% of it very good or better. Did the provider listen to your concerns? Another area of customer satisfaction. We all like to think that what we say to our doctor or our provider is important, and we want to know that they're listening and paying attention to us. 97% said yes, they did. Only 3% said no. Did the provider answer your questions? Another area of customer satisfaction. Again, 97% said yes, 3% saying no. Did the provider meet your medical needs? 97% yes, 3% no. The next one gets down into time of wait. How long did you wait in the reception area? This deals with service efficiency. Less than five minutes, 54%. Six to 15 minutes, 37%. That gets us up to, what, about 91% in less than 15 minutes. Another 6% went the 16 to 30 minutes, and we had just 1% in the 31 to 45, 1% in 46 to 60, and 1% of more than 60. The ones that are in those larger categories were attributable to one provider that was having some problems getting into work on time, and that very quickly, once presented to the management company, CARE ATC, they rectified that situation. They worked it out and fixed that. How long did you wait in the examination room? Again, service efficiency. Less than five minutes, 45%. Another 43% went the six to 15 minutes, and 8% went the 16 to 30, and just two or three other percent in the other categories. I guess the acid test of how people feel about the Health and Wellness Center is answered by the next question. Would you recommend the Health and Wellness Center, your family member or to a colleague? Again, this is customer satisfaction, and 90% would recommend it, again. We just have a bomb dropped.
Just about.
Okay.
I'm just applauding and jumping up and down for those numbers.
I know you're excited. These are good numbers. Today is a good report, so y'all be at ease. All right. The recommendations and responses. One is to continue efforts to enhance the health care cost savings through lower cost of health care delivery through the Health and Wellness Center and direct contracting as warranted by service volume. The response, Human Resources has agreed that they will work with CARE ATC and Shaw Hankins to review opportunities for cost savings and direct contractings annually. Human Resources is currently reviewing recommendations to include eConsult, which is a peer-to-peer consult by the Health and Wellness Center provider with a specialist before a specialist referral is made for the patient. They're also looking at direct contracting for physical therapy and also for at-home sleep studies for potential direct contracting. So these are some new areas that they're looking at where we can buy it at an even lower price than we get it through the discounted rates at Blue Cross Blue Shield. Now, a lot of this hinges on having enough volume to make it worthwhile. You know, another area that we could possibly do it would be, you know, renal dialysis services. The problem is, you have to have enough volume to warrant getting a contract with an individual provider. So at this time, we didn't have quite enough of that to warrant that, but that's another area of possibility, because those are frequent visits, and they're generally ongoing for long periods of time. The next one was to increase participation in the Health and Wellness Center through promotion and marketing. Human Resources will continue to encourage participation at the HWC at the time of enrollment, during open enrollment, and by participation in the personal health assessments, health education, health awareness programs, and other incentives. You may recall, just this year, you all approved letting the people that participated in the health risk assessment and the biometric screening, that if they did those things as an incentive, that they would not receive the 7.3% rate increase. We jumped from about 25 or 30% a year ago up to over 70%, I'm told, this year as a result of that. Another thing that was cleverly done, I think, was that many of these, the oversight of these two screenings in both the health risk assessment and the biometric screening were performed by and through the Health and Wellness Center, which gave a lot of our employees additional exposure to it, and many of them found that they liked it. So a lot of those people are now using it on a more regular basis, some that had never used it before. So that's a very good way to increase participation. So we thank y'all for allowing them to do that, and hope we can continue that in the future. We also want to offer health education programs intermittently throughout the year to the employees and covered dependents, and Human Resources and CARE ATC have agreed that they will continue to offer these programs, healthy cooking programs and onsite exercise programs and others as may be possible. Also, we want to encourage employees and dependents to participate in exercise and fitness programs to include their health, improve their health status and quality of life. Again, we responded with, we will continue to encourage our employees and dependents to participate in these programs, including but not limited to the Walktober Program, the Biggest Loser Contest, Weight Watchers at Work Programs, cardio programs, and our tobacco cessation programs and others as they may be created. Any questions on this report? It's a very good report. We're seeing a lot of positive results, and I think we all deserve to recognize that the City Council and the City Manager and the Mayor have been very supportive of this endeavor, as has our Human Resources Director, Ms. Teresa Hallwell, and our CARE ATC is our managing provider over there, and Shaw Hankins, our Benefit Consultant. I really think we're on the right track, and I think we will see that we have the opportunity to not only bring that cost trend down from its level point, we may actually take it negative, because there's two components that really make up that trend. One is utilization, and the other is cost. We always refer to it as a cost trend, but if you take the utilization down, even if the cost remain the same or rise slightly, you can still pull the curve down on the overall cost. And if we could increase those savings even by getting half of our people to do it, we're probably looking at about an additional $2 million of annual savings. That is a lot of money that it would free up to do other things that need to be done in this government. So I would encourage you to, you know, keep that in the forefront. Any questions?
No. Good job. Hang on. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I just want, Mr. City Manager, I just want to thank you and your staff. I know we ask about this every year when we look at our Health and Wellness Center when it comes budget time, and we've done some audits and all, just to keep a good eye on it. We've been open now for the Health and Wellness Center. It's been, is it four years now? Five? Five years now, and it looks like it's on a great track and moving in the right direction, and, you know, a lot of people need credit for that, for not only the vision, the idea, but, again, this year, there's savings, return on investment, Mr. Redmond, and with your partner, Ms. Barfield, and all looking into this. We really appreciate it. Our consultants, I just, I think this is a positive in our government, and the positive is it's not only returning investment, keeping costs down, but it's saving the city money, and at the same time, you know, just providing the services at a much lower cost. And when you look at things going on on the national side, and both locally, you look at all the other surrounding corporations or employment entities, employer entities, and what they're able to offer, I think this government still is able to offer health care at a very low cost, a low rate. And it's the employees' health plan. It's not, it was really not the government. It's the employees paying into this. So this is, I view this as a positive report.
I do, too, Counselor Davis, and I appreciate your comments. If you recall, back in the earlier part of this decade, we were looking at cost increases in the 5% to 8%, 9% range, while nationally and even regionally, they were at a few points higher than that. But every year, that created a funding problem when you guys came together to look at the budget, because you said, well, it looks like we might have a million dollars in new revenue this year, and suddenly somebody sucks a straw and it all goes up in the health care fund. And, you know, there was not money for pay increases. There was not money for funding capital purchases and other things that really were priority things. Additional employees in some departments, we heard earlier from our auditors, that are needed. So I think that this is really, is more positive than even we realized, and if we can increase those savings by getting more people participating, we will save even more.
Thanks, sir. You know, and I tell you, there's not many ways to control the cost of providing health care, and that's not a governmental problem. That is a nationwide issue with employers trying to continue to provide for the folks that work for them. And I give credit to our HR department and our department heads, because they had to help our employees reach a comfort level that they weren't being asked to get rid of their doctor. This was, this was an opportunity for them to go for supplemental health care as, to put a spin on it. And they're going to have an impact, have a, make a direct difference in what it costs them going forward, because if, the more people that are utilizing that health care or the Health and Wellness Center, the greater the likelihood is that we'll be able to hold the line on the cost, and that's going to have an impact in their paycheck. So I just think it's a great job by the department heads and by our HR department as well.
Okay. Thank you. With no other questions, I'd like to move on to the second presentation, which will be very brief. And this is an update on the status of the corrective action plan on the office of the Clerk of Council. You may recall, we issued the audit report Ms. Barfield presented back in August of last year, and resulted in some changes, and you all asked us to develop a corrective action plan, and then and then to, you asked Ms. Barfield, our forensic auditor, to provide some oversight for that since she had performed the audit. Now, obviously, she didn't go over there and manage the department in the absence of the clerk. The Deputy Clerk, Listen, ran that with the, with the other employees in the department. And I want to say, there was a lot of people that helped out with making this thing happen. But frankly, there were portions of it with so many missing minutes that my guess was it might be a couple of years to get it done. But what I wanted to report tonight is that it's done even much faster than that. And those people, all of those people, as well as people in the Finance Department, particularly in the Purchasing Division, we had some outside consultants come in. Doug Rollo came in from, and assisted. City Manager offered the services of his intern, Lawrence Christian, who was very active, involved in, particularly in some of the systems aspects of it, as well as other things. The Georgia Clerks Association participated. And as I said, Doug Rollo came from Georgia Archives Records Management and provided some onsite consultation and guidance. Without the help of all of these people, inside and outside, we wouldn't be to the point we are today because we had a long way to go. First thing, the overview. We established the priorities for the corrective action. We looked at summary minutes, which could be corrected very quickly. Official minutes, which were going to take considerably longer. We estimated contracts, which were not, about half of them were nonexistent. They were not organized and certainly were not arranged in any technological system. And also, to identify technologies to improve the clerk's office productivity. So, those were really the big issues. Few other things were removing some old records and moving to record storage facility, things that need to be retained, but that didn't necessarily need to be in the immediate area. To implement and administer the records retention program according to the state of Georgia guidelines. Mr. Hugo has had that going on over at the Records Management Center for many years, but all of this was not necessarily moving over there. To reduce clutter and rearrange the storage areas in the office and remove obsolete equipment and excess filing cabinets. And the whole goal is, really, the overriding consideration is to make the office as paperless as possible, except for the required official books of minutes, ordinances, resolutions, titles, and deeds. Those things, you need to retain the hard copies, and they need to be available at all times for public inspection or for reference. Also, to increase the frequency of the MUNICode updates. Previously, they were being done semi-annually, and by the time they were sent off and they came back, they were, it was approaching nine or 10 months. And that's just not frequent enough when you're posting your, your codes online, your ordinances, and you've got citizens and businesses out there that are trying to abide by them, and you've had changes that are not yet reflected. So, we wanted to increase the frequency of those, even though it does cost us a little bit more to do it more frequently. We also wanted to look at the separation of the payroll processing duties within the office. In the past, the clerk had actually overseen both the entry of the time and the approval of time, and we talked earlier tonight, you all have, about separation of duties. And then, within the payroll process, that's part of what's recommended with our new payroll system. And Ms. Holloway, Hollowell, and also the Finance Payroll Section have been working with our department heads to train people, one to be the timekeeper who records the time and puts it into the system, and then the approver, which is usually the supervisor, manager, or director that actually approves the time. And theoretically, if there's an adjustment that needs to be made, those changes go back to the timekeeper for the correction, and then they're re-approved. And that's very important because the timekeeper enters the work, the hours worked for vacation, sick leave, holidays, and other types of absences. And the approver reviews and approves all that time before the payroll office processes the payment. Here's the current status of the corrective action, and I think you'll be very pleased. I was just elated when I went over there on January the 11th and, and looked at the status. The summary minutes were up to date through the last City Council meeting at that time. They were all in place. The official minutes in the books were up to date, awaiting approval of the January 8th meeting, which they couldn't do until the next meeting, before signing and placing in the minute books, except as noted below. Minutes for the following dates do not exist, and there are no notes or videos for their creation. There's 10 dates, and I've got them listed for you, but the good news is that they're all back from 1998 to 2010. So, the likelihood that we will have a need to reference those is, is fairly slim. The other thing, when Doug Rollo came down, he advised us to include a statement of fact in all of our minute books, which basically says that they're factual and accurate to the extent that they possibly can be, but there may be some errors or omissions. And that kind of covers these 10 dates that are not covered. The contracts are now up to date, except for a small number that are retained in administrative departments outside of the contracts that are on file in the Purchasing Division of Finance. Our Finance Department, in particular the Purchasing Division, keeps a very accurate inventory of all the contracts that they administer, and particularly the ones that are active. They even retain the old ones for a period of time after that. But they, they were very helpful, Andrea McCorvey and her staff, in opening that access up to the people in the clerk's office and allowing them to access it so they knew what they, they could actually check their inventory and determine what they needed to add to their files. The contracts that were more difficult, that they're still working on, it's just a small percentage of them are the ones that are retained in other departments for, because they really administer those contracts. And these are things like the highway departments and the, the planning, a lot of those road planning and building projects. Those things are really administered either by planning or one of those departments, engineering. So, sometimes, they have those contracts, but they're working on getting those. So, this element of it is probably about 90 to 95% complete at this time. We anticipate it will be completed in the next several months. So, really, in a period of six months, all these deficiencies have pretty well been cleaned up. Obviously, you've appointed a new clerk. We've got the staff in place. During the time of the cleanup, there, there was some light duty people that were, some public safety workers that were returned to light duty that came in and helped us out. We also had two temporaries in there for a short period of time, and one of them helped cover the, the absence of the secretary in there while she was on maternity leave. So, it's just really amazing how far it's come. As I said, the updates are now submitted monthly or as ordinances are adopted. Obviously, if we don't have any in a given month, then they wouldn't be anything sent to MUNICode for codification. The new software for agenda preparation and minutes has been purchased from MUNICode and is scheduled for implementation and staff training in February of this year. Policies and procedures and several forms have been updated to improve efficiency of the office, quality and accuracy of the information obtained. And the old records were transferred to the Record Storage Facility in implementing the records retention guidelines. As the older records exceed the retention guidelines, they will be destroyed, and a certification of destroyed records will be provided to the clerk's office by the records retention facility. And the City Council members and internal auditors will perform unannounced visits to the office to review and complete a work completion status report periodically to ensure that the work product is current and to ensure adequate oversight of the office of the Clerk of Council. I have a couple of additional recommendations, and I would like for y'all to consider these. One is recommended that the Office of the Clerk of Council continue its efforts to prepare, store, and provide documents in electronic form and make the office as paperless as possible, accepting the legal requirements for books of official minutes, ordinances, resolutions, deeds, and et cetera in printed forms. We also recommend that the City Council appropriate a little bit of funding for the office to be repainted and recarpeted to provide a more professional image for this important official city function of the city because this is the day-to-day face of the City Council. I know the citizens see you on TV when we're having a meeting like we are tonight. I know that they come before this forum and address you. But on a day-to-day basis, really, that office is the face of the City Council, and the carpet in there is really old and threadbare, and really, it, it needs some attention and some new paint. I think probably $5,000 or so could probably take care of that, but I hope we can find some funding to do that. We commend the efforts of Deputy Clerk, Listen, the office staff, and others who have significantly contributed to this improvement of the Office of the Clerk of Council. The project has been accomplished much faster than was expected, and we acknowledge the significant efforts of those involved in restoring the records of the clerk's office to its expected level of timeliness and accuracy. A few remaining items are manageable and can be finished soon. Any questions?
Yes, Counselor, Mayor Protem Pugh.
Oh, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to say thank you to the Clerk's and Council's office staff.
Absolutely.
For the time that you all put in, and also, Ms. Barfield, for the time you all put into getting everything, trying to get it caught up and looking at different ways on which we could get things caught up and the way we can more efficiently have an ongoing impact on the items that were brought out. And, Mr. City Manager, I don't know who would do this, but if somebody can do an analysis of the office, physical office itself, and see what needs, what it would take to bring it up to a better, um, shape than it was in there.
Yes, ma'am.
So, maybe having a lot of problems with the heat. I understand that it's horrible.
Yeah. Well, Madam Mayor Protem, I'll have maintenance to look at the heat, but on, on other matters of painting and things like that, I've already asked Deputy City Manager Goodwin just a minute ago to get involved and take a look at that.
Okay. And, um, just Listen, if there's anything else in there that you think needs to be done, send a recommendation to the City Manager of the office. Or to, uh, Mrs. Goodwin.
That's right.
Furniture, what else? And that includes any equipment that you all need to do your job, that needs to be brought up to modern-day equipment.
Mayor Protem, they have made a lot of strides to make this a better work environment. They cleaned out a lot of old and obsolete equipment, things that were, computers that were broken that were still around in there. When they removed so many of the records and organized them and put them into electronic form, they were able to clean out a lot of files that were being stored in filing cabinets. And really, it's, it's a much friendlier environment today than it was a year ago when we were actually doing the audit over there. I think there's just been a lot of effort, but, you know, the final touches are really fairly easy to accomplish. And yes, it'd be nice to have some new furniture in there. I'm sure they would appreciate that in addition to the carpet and the paint. But, and there probably are a few pieces of equipment that would be helpful. The, the new software should be a big benefit, particularly in terms of preparing the agenda and the minutes because it helps you to do it more efficiently. They do a great job now, but if you can do it a little bit more efficiently, it allows you time to devote to some of the other tasks, making sure you've got everything you need and it's out there and posted. But it's, it's very, been very important to get those records online, in particular the summary minutes, getting them out there to where they're available to the public within the specified 72 hours following the council meeting.
All right. Any, any more comments or questions of Mr. Redmond? John, thank you for what your office does. Appreciate it very much.
We'll be bringing more reports in the near future.
Yes, sir, I'm sure you will.